Good morning, we are live.
Over to you Chair Harrington.
We have been for about ten minutes.
Commissioner Trees.
Well, we were just chatting.
Thank you, and welcome back everyone to our work session of Tuesday, October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. I will note that Commissioner Trees has joined us for this topic. Thank you for taking time away from your vacation. For this topic that we know is of great importance to the full board. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Angie and the team to take us through planning for the Public Safety Local Option Levy and local library, excuse me, library local option levy replacement planning.
Good afternoon Chair, good, good morning, it still is morning, having so much fun. Good morning Chair Harrington and Board of Commissioners. Before Ms. Calvert to Mr. Brandsford begin their presentation, I'd like to offer the Board a bit of context. As you might recall, the public safety and library levies are due to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. Today's presentation is meant to give your Board information and a framework to talk about which election date to target for each of those levies. Today's presentation is not about what the mix of services, service levels, tax rates, or other policy decisions should be made for either levy. Those, those additional policy questions will be brought to your Board later. As Erin and Philip will talk about in a moment, staff and county administration, finance, and in each levy-funded department will work together in the months ahead under your Board's policy direction to bring back financial and programmatic information and policy options for your Board to consider. Today's presentation is about how much time to give staff and your Board to engage in this important work. And with that, I'll hand the presentation over to Erin and Philip. And did we get connected? Okay.
Thank you, Tanya, good morning Chair Harrington and Commissioners. As mentioned for the record, I'm Erin Calvert with the County Administrative Office, and I'm joining Philip Brandsford Communications Officer today to provide a presentation on the Public Safety and Library Levies Timeline Options for your Board's Consideration. Greg Munn was included in the development and design of this presentation but is unable to be with us, he's at a conference today. And of course, we'll be bringing Assistant County Administrator Danny Ledesma in on the team soon as well. So why are we here and why now? Tanya mentioned some of this in her opening statements. The current cycle of the Public Safety and Library levies are in their third year and will expire on June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-six. We know that the levy, that both levies provide let, library and public safety services that are highly valued by the community. We also know that our property tax rates are not keeping up with expenditures, and that creates gaps in the county's ability to deliver services. Library Services is undergoing a system-wide governance and funding process, as your Board is aware of, and that has just kicked off. And also Public Safety and Justice System is also undergoing a system-wide analysis, and that also just begun. And your Board heard a lot about that last week. With that, work on the both, work on both the library and public safety services are happening. We know that planning, there's a lot of moving parts, and it takes a lot longer than we always think it's going to take. So we did want to get direction from you sooner than later. And I think when we look back on our two thousand and twenty levy experiences, we know that we thought we had a long kind of runway for planning. And looking back, I think we'd all agree, it just didn't seem like enough time. So we're trying to come to you sooner than later today. The policy question for your Board's consideration today, of course, is which May or November election should staff target for the renewal or replacement of the Public Safety and Library levies? In order to make that decision and be able to provide direction, today's presentation will include some background and the approach to both levies. We'll walk through some options and timelines. We'll present some additional considerations for your Board to weigh in on. And we hope that in the end, we've provided enough information for your Board to discuss these options and provide direction to staff. So background and approach. This slide provides a side-by-side look at the purpose and history of the Public Safety and Library levies. Starting on the left with Public Safety, it provides balanced growth within the countywide criminal justice system as the population grows. So this might look like a deputy with increasing population, it might look like a probation officer for increasing caseloads. It could also look maybe like a specialized caseload, which we talked a lot about in the last levy around domestic violence, caseloads and case managers. It addresses resource gaps that the general fund revenues cannot fill. And as we've mentioned, we rely heavily on levy funds to provide resources that the general fund is able, unable to do. The Public Safety Levy was first approved by voters in the year two thousand, it was replaced in two thousand and six, renewed in two thousand and ten and two fifteen, and then replaced in two thousand and twenty. The current rate is forty-seven cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. As your Board is aware, that was a five cent increase from the prior rate of two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and ten. And it provides roughly sixteen percent of the criminal justice system revenue. The library levy does much of the same, it maintains and strategically implements services to meet patron needs as populations grow, as the population grows. So again, that's that ability to be flexible with additional services and needs as the community grows. Provides funding to member libraries for ongoing operations, helps pay for system-wide automation and outreach. The library levy was first approved by voters in two thousand and six, it was renewed in two thousand and ten, replaced in two thousand and fifteen, and then renewed again in two thousand and twenty. The current rate is twenty-two cents per thousand dollars of assessed value, and that had no change from the prior year in two thousand and fifteen. The library levy provides roughly forty-two percent of WCCLS revenue with distributions to member libraries that support operations.
Okay, thank you. Some of your Board might remember this chart from two thousand and nineteen, I believe, when we got that two thousand and twenty cycle process going. And what, and I've stripped out some of the complexity here just to get to the basic concept, which is two overlaying processes happening at the beginning, heavy on process or proposal development. And then at the end, it's all about communication and outreach, but there's this portion in the middle where we're doing a lot of both. And it feels very complicated. But really, when you think of it in a, in simple terms, it's these two overlaying processes. So some of the things that we end up doing when we're in that proposal development phase are, you know, financial program analysis, we're, you know, interacting with internal stakeholders. You know, every levy-funded department is, is part of the conversation. We're drafting the proposal, we're coming to your Board with briefings, and then ultimately we'll transmit a staff recommendation and, and hopefully that meets with your Board's approval. Those kinds of things are part of that first big triangle there, proposal development. But simultaneously, there's also, you know, a poll of our voting population that we would, that we would work towards. We would, you know, share those, brief the Board about the findings, the questionnaire and the findings of the random sample survey or poll of our voting population. We would start that process of engaging our stakeholders external to the organization. There are many of them interested in our success. And we would bring a, you know, ballot material, ballot title, explanatory statement to your Board for consideration and adopting. And then we would help the Board file the, the two measures. And then it's all over but the shouting, we just continuously provide, you know, ever-increasing outreach, all from the county anyways, in, in a neutral tone that we maintain our, you know, our factual lane, if you will, of how we communicate with voters, a non-advocacy role that we play, and hopefully a good outcome on Election Day. So it, again, just in that middle portion, these things are happening on top of one another. It's almost like a symbiotic kind of feeling that we'll go through, and we just wanted to map that out for your Board. All throughout this process at the, at the, I should emphasize, I didn't say it, can't say it enough. In the proposal development, we will be engaged with Greg Munn and his team about the financial and, and, you know, the, the work that libraries, Library Services does as well in terms of the financial side of this. So in any event, I wanted to underscore that, that piece. And then let's, let's think of that model here as I show you. What we're thinking of in terms of a proposal for our election timeline, we've just broken it out. You can imagine those triangles existing here, but we would be taking them off to make it less complicated visually. And we have three, these three years in front of us, most of two thousand and twenty-three already gone. But we are already in that financial programmatic analysis conversation right here with your Board, of course. And then I think you heard a presentation from Ms. Tattersall in July about the work that WCCLS is doing. They're going to issue an RFP for their Governance and Financial Analysis project later this, this, this calendar year. And then as we move into two thousand and twenty-four, that would allow that WCCLS process to continue in terms of base service level finding, cost findings and so forth for their member libraries. Similar processes will be going on with the Public Safety Levy. That would be the time we would, we would propose we'd do our public opinion research with the voting population. And then this, in our, in our staff proposal, would culminate in election in two thousand and twenty-five. So we would have more information coming from the process that libraries have gone through. We would have ballot title, explanatory statement and so forth to bring to your Board for filing in that, that year of two thousand and twenty-five. And as we look at the options ahead of us, these seem to be the ones. There's some technical reasons why we wouldn't consider other dates that aren't shown here. These are the one, these are the election dates that seem to be within the realm of the possible. And, and we can get into some conversation here as we move through the slides as, as to which ones are better than others in our view. So with that, I believe I'm handing it, oh, no, I'm still talking. Here's a little research that I think your Board might be interested in. So this chart is showing the last three times we went to the voters with both of these levies together. The last three elections in five-year increments. And this first slide is showing what was the turnout for these different elections. So in two thousand and ten, we had, you know, well over a hundred and eighty thousand ballots come back and seventy-one percent turnout, that's seventy-one percent of the registered voters for that, for that election. We, as you can see, when we go in an off, or an odd year off cycle, that, that, those two numbers go way down. Then in the two thousand and twenty, with that presidential cycle, we, we brought it back up a little bit, not as high as two thousand and twenty, two thousand and ten, interestingly. So keep this slide in mind, it's going to get a little bit more complicated with the next one. But yeah, go ahead.
Clarifying question on the two thousand and fifteen, oh, it was November, okay.
Yeah, November, November, May, in this, in what we've gone through in the last three cycles.
Yep.
Okay, so keeping that, those three elections in mind, here's the overlay of how we did with each levy. And so the blue bars there are all the yes votes, the kind of orangish-red bars are the no votes. The little dots with the percentages, that's the percent yes of those ballots cast for that measure. And we have both Public Safety and Library levies on the same ballot, each one of these underneath the name of the measure we have, whether it was a renewal, meaning that the rate was just the same as the last cycle, or if, if it was a replacement, that meant that we increased the rate. And then again, those, those two thousand and ten, November, two thousand and fifteen, November, two thousand and twenty, May election cycles. So you can see the, the turnout, of course, in two thousand and fifteen went down. We had a replacement levy on the library side in that year. And that, so we had, you can see the impact there on the yes votes came down as well. As you, you know, move into two thousand and twenty, we had a replacement on the public safety side. So we came down from our, from our height there in two thousand and fifteen, and two thousand and ten wasn't doing too bad either. Anytime you're doing a replacement, you can imagine that, that number coming down on the yes side. Libraries had a renewal in two thousand and twenty, so they, they maintained some, some pretty good support from voters, plenty of yes votes. So that's a, that's a look at, you know, our past statistics here with the voters. We also take a look at what measures might there be on the ballot from other taxing districts in the county? And for that matter, the state could have some measures on the ballot. These are the measures that, you know, we looked at, you know, close to five years ago in terms of what is coming up for expiration, just like our two levies are going to expire in two thousand and twenty-six in June. What, what else might be expiring pretty quick? And so the various taxing districts listed here have levy, most of them have local option levies that will expire June two thousand and twenty-five. So could they co-go out in two thousand and twenty-four, either in May or November? Yeah, sure, they could do that. They, a lot of them with those expirations in two thousand and twenty-five could occupy that May, two thousand and twenty-five election spot. I don't know if that, if I were in their shoes, I would go for that as my Plan A, but that's possible, they could come to that election as well. We don't know of any elections, any money measures coming to the ballot in two thousand and twenty-six yet, but that's quite a ways away. I did talk or communicated with our Elections Manager this morning to just to double check, hey, I'm going to talk to the Board about these things. Any, anything coming in on your end? And no, nothing's come in yet. No petition drive paperwork has come in from anybody interested in a referendum. No taxing district has filed a measure yet, it's still early. But that's the word from, from our Elections Division from this, just this morning. All right, I'm going to hand it to you.
Right, thank you. Okay, this slide is designed, really, there's a lot going on here, but we'll walk through it. It's designed really to do that side-by-side on the year, and we've listed some pluses and minuses on the, just the different elections that Philip just covered. So just starting left to right, in the two thousand and twenty-four presidential election, if your Board were to select those dates, May or November, the plus, it tends to attract the highest voter turnout. It does provide multiple backup elections. So again, with our levies expiring June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-six, there's plenty of time on that backend for elections. The minuses might be that there's less time for financial and programmatic analysis. As we've mentioned, it would not be aligned with the process that WCCLS is currently undergoing, so there would be misalignment with that. Another negative is that unaffiliated voters are less likely to participate in primaries. We're recognizing also that while we've put these as pluses and minuses, your Board may have different weight to those. Some of those, some of the pluses may weigh more than another, and same with the minuses. So in two thousand and twenty-five, as Philip mentioned, that would be an off-year election cycle. The positives, positives of selecting a two thousand and twenty-five election would give us more time for financial and programmatic analysis. We've had recent experience with supportive outcomes and even off-year elections. And then that would still provide some multiple backup election options. But as Philip mentioned, and you just saw on the previous slides, it tends to attract the lowest turnout of all three options. If we move into the two thousand and twenty-six, that would be a gubernatorial election. Also, that would provide more time for staff to do the financial and programmatic analysis. We have, again, had recent experience with supportive outcomes, as mentioned. And then there are fewer measures expected, as Philip said, but it's so far out, we, that could fill up too. So we're not sure about that, we'd expect that to change. Some of the negatives of a May, two thousand and twenty-six is that really is the last opportunity before the levies expire. We'd be in, currently in a budget process for that next fiscal year, so there would be a lot going on with that. It tends to attract a lower turnout than presidential, but a little bit more than the off-year cycle. And then again, the unaffiliated voters are less likely to participate in the primaries. Other considerations, just in general, is that replacement levies tend to receive less support no matter where they are on the ballot. And then ballots often include other funding measures, and voters are selective, of course. And November general elections tend to attract more new voters, but they also allow for more outreach time. So again, just reviewing the policy question for your Board, which May or November election should staff target for the renewal or replacement of the Public Safety and Library levies? And our staff recommendation is for both levies, that we are recommending continuing programmatic and financial analysis, and would ask to tentatively target the primary election on May twentieth of two thousand and twenty-five. As mentioned, it allows time for programmatic and financial analysis, as well as the WCCLS governance discussion. One thing to note in that, we are looking at the current health of the levy fund. So just a reminder, when you think about how much planning, we planned in two thousand and nineteen for a levy that ends in two thousand and twenty-six, and that is a lot of financial projection and Greg Munn magic that has to happen in terms of, of, you know, now we're in the middle of that fund, and we have, was it enough? Are we covering services? And so we're really looking at the fund current, so that helps us give projections to your Board on what's needed coming up. So this timeline allows for more of that. It allows time for voter opinion research, and sometimes you might want to have more than one voter poll and, and really work through some of what the questions are and what the community is interested in. As we've mentioned, Washington County has been successful in past odd-year elections. And I think this data is sort of that magic of a little bit upfront time, as well as a little bit of backend time in case we needed a backup election. And with that, we're happy to answer questions.
Can you go back to the previous slide? And just to understand the staff recommendation, one of the things that was difficult with the campaign work of the May, two thousand and twenty Public Safety Levy is that the referral was proposed in January, completed in February, which was not enough time for a May election. So for your recommendation, excuse me, can you please clarify what your thinking is for the referral? Because in your earlier slide, it indicates that the referral would also happen in two thousand and twenty-five, which I'll hold my comment to later. So what, for May, for your recommendation of May, two thousand and twenty-five, what are you proposing for a referral timeframe?
Yeah, I can try that. We were thinking of that same, that same very quick cycle, Chair, where we come to your Board in that, you know, first quarter of calendar year, two thousand and twenty-five with referral. Yes, and that was, that was, that's tough going. We would have more time if we went in November, so there's a trade-off there, because then, you know, you burn one of your backup plans, if you will. So I'll just, I'll just end by saying, you know, we, we could, we could end up going faster than maybe we're thinking right now with our, with our time in the rest of this year and next calendar year, with some of the programmatic and governance processes that are anticipated, that are certainly needed. So, so this is a conservative expression of what we would, what we would, you know, recommend to your, to your Board to consider.
So I'll, I'll just share my comments now. So going into this presentation, I had laid down for myself what work was done, both from the Board, starting in July of two thousand and nineteen, for the referral work as covered by the proposed election timeline that is on Slide nine. And then I overlaid that with the campaign work. And one of the difficulties for fundraising for the campaign for the Public Safety Levy is that the referral was so late in time compared to the need for fundraising, external fundraising, and staff is not part of this, and that's why it's not part of this presentation. So in order to be successful, in my mind, with a May, two thousand and twenty-five campaign, we would need to have that referral as early as September of two thousand and twenty-four, no later than October of two thousand and twenty-four. It is going to be a bigger replacement, we will need additional dollars. So as part of challenging my thinking on there, I went and looked at the election results for the November, two thousand and twenty turnout, which was high, about seventy percent for county items, and the May, two thousand and twenty elections, once again, the last, the most recent off-year that we have. And that was, the biggest items there were the three, the school boards such as Beaverton, Hillsborough, Tiger, Twalatin, with turnouts in the twenties, low twenties to twenty-four percent. But I did check out, I had not previous to now checked out the two thousand and fifteen numbers, and the May, two thousand and fifteen ballot really didn't have much on it. And so these two Washington County levies were the big-ticket items, and it had a pretty decent turnout of thirty-four percent, which for an off-year election, it was November, two thousand and fifteen that I was looking at, is still pretty darn good. But it emphasizes the importance of that campaign outreach, which relies upon the referral date. So I was coming into this work session thinking, well, if we can pull off the referral date in September or October of two thousand and twenty-four, then I could see being successful with the May of two thousand and twenty-five. But that isn't what is part of the staff proposal here. So from my standpoint, and I'm a pretty hard-working campaign kind of person, I'm, I myself have serious misgivings around that May, two thousand and twenty-five proposal. I feel much more comfortable with November, two thousand and twenty-five, because I know there is work that needs to be done on the library governance and funding model, and just the reaction that I heard from a mayor in Washington County on the levy side, thinking that the county should be making up for revenue they don't have for libraries, and that's not the intent, it's all about common services, common operation needs. And also, one thing, Lisa, I know we're not getting into the services side, but one thing that WCCLS provides is those, those digital licenses across the network, which is very different from the other physical collections. So there, where did I put my note to myself? I went back and looked at the data of mayors, and I can't even find my note to myself here. There it is. For the replacement levy for the libraries, none of the current mayors were here for that. And they play a big role because of the sense of community that libraries provide. Then for the Public Safety Levy, the replacement in two thousand and twenty, only one of the current mayors was a mayor then as well. So there's a lot of work to do here in terms of building these proposals and then that outreach that's needed. And motor voter has, has changed registrations as well. So I don't want to be any more long-winded than I already am. So those are just my initial thoughts, and I'd like to turn it over to my fellow colleagues. And I know that we have at least two of you on, online, so feel free to chime in. And we've lost both of them.
No, no, I'm here.
We just can't.
And I'm here.
Sorry.
Can you see me?
Yes, I can see you, Commissioner Trees.
May I ask a couple of questions here? Okay. First of all, I, Chair, I really understand what you're talking about in terms of the referral date and when we, you know, how that, how that works for us in terms of campaign timing. But I don't understand. What I don't understand is, is it a possibility to move the referral date up? I didn't get that from Philip.
Yeah, no, thank you, Commissioner Treese. Yes, the, the, all, all of these milestones, with the exception of the, you know, the statutory deadline are, are in play here. So what the chair is talking about could very well happen with, there could be a proposal brought to your board in 2024 to refer one or both levies to the May 2025 election. That would just presume a good deal of staff work and conversation dialogue with your board would be, would be, you know, we'd be going at a high rate of speed. And then we didn't anticipate that that would, that would come to be. We wanted to give a little more flexibility, but is it possible? It is possible.
Okay. And obviously the, the question becomes the risk and, you know, where, where do we sit in, in the risk profile for these things?
And Not to interrupt you, Commissioner Treese, but Ms. Angie has some further comment for us all on this.
Please.
Before we come back to you.
So I just want, I want to speak to timing. First out, I will start with the libraries. Ms. Ms. Tatterstall is in the process of issuing out the RFP right now for governance and is expecting the work to be, be completed by September of 2024. So that it, moving it up would put, constrict the timeline. We could ask the consultant to move the date up because we're in the RFP process. With the constricted timeline, though, the dollars that your board had put aside in your budget amendment process this year for additional staffing resources, I would be looking at limited duration, either consultant or staffing time relative to finance and also communications to pull out, pull off a shorter timeline. I just want to, I'm trying to be very thoughtful about the analysis that staff need to do to, I'll say, kind of get this right, both within the county administration office, finance, as well as our sheriff's office and libraries.
Thank you for that clarification. I'm highly respectful of, of that situation. So the other, the other question I had, Philip, it was, I think you're second to the last slide about the other referral, the other measures that are on the ballot at the same time. And has that historically been the perspective as well? Is that what you're saying? It's, it's, those have always been on the ballot when we've gone to the ballot?
Oh, no, not necessarily. They're just potential. And again, it's just based on, you know, counting backwards to when these different taxing districts had originally put their local option levies into effect. You can come up with a list like this. We didn't talk to any of these taxing districts to, to ask them what their plans were. We just kind of sort of reverse engineered the, the, the answer for ourselves. They're in the same boat as any, any other taxing district. They only have five years under the Oregon law to, to have a local option levy in effect.
And one last question, can you tell me the percentage difference between the yes and the no votes for both the public safety and the library vote in the last cycle?
Sure, that's in this, this chart. Thank you, Erin, for backing that up. So in the 2020
I just don't remember.
Oh, sure. Yeah, public safety enjoyed a 55% yes vote in May of 2020. Library levies or library system enjoyed a 69%.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Those are my questions, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioners, comments opening up to the floor?
Go ahead, Roy, if you get some.
I was gonna see if Confisa is online, yeah.
Commissioner Phi?
Hi, thank you, Commissioner Rogers. I am online. I'm just a bit off camera for a second and I should be back on. I don't have any questions. I'm in support of the recommendation.
Well, having been around for every one of those elections and remembering what it takes, I'm, I'm dubious at best at 24, at best. Let's get a little political. We've, we've got two potential people who are very much divisive at, at, at the presidential level. And I think you're going to see people squaring away and, and it might be very difficult to, to talk, you know, in a more rational sense. I, I just think it's going to be politicized. The whole year 24 is going to be politicized. Also, I, I agree that these things take a long time to get a sense of what we need to do, and it's going to take a bit. Add to that that you've got a new sheriff, and which, an election for a sheriff, and you're asking that person to, to be out advocating as they're running. You're going to have a new District Three, my district person, and they're coming in and what's their position there? Do they keep their heads low, you know, to, for that election? So I think 24 is just way too, too soon. Twenty, I like the governance issue. I'm a big proponent of that. As you know, I've done that in all my conversations internally that the county seems to be in the middle of something that's not really well understood. And the chair's comments about going to a meeting and nobody really having had background and understanding that the county's role is more convenable than anything else, just speaks to that issue. I mean, we all need to be in the same rowboat, rowing the same way. And so I'm hoping that governance stuff can be done. I need, that takes a bit of time. I, I certainly wouldn't think that November is that, that bad an option. May, there's always difficulty. You just don't know. I mean, you try, but may, maybe a very difficult election. So I, I tend to go to the November of 25 personally. And frankly, with a very tragic amount of war going on in the Middle East right now, it's escalating as we talk. The economy, everyone that I've read looked at predicting at best is some recessionary period. If that happens, it's probably going to happen in 24. You don't want to be in the midst of that with having a contentious national elections. We don't want to be trying to explain why people should take more money out of their pocket when they are feeling jittery about whether they can afford groceries and everything else. So I, that'll all settle down. I mean, it's all temporary. So I, 25 to me, that's just my opinion, 25 is a year, get beyond any recessionary concerns, get beyond any national actions, get into more rational things with local level do of, you know, providing good governance and providing services and allow staff to do their work of, of modeling and, and looking at the governance issue. So, and I think again, my last is that May of 25 is really close. I, I don't know, it's a deal. So that's my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Willie?
Yeah, I wanted to make sure I, I heard Philip and Erin correctly. So May 25 is, is okay. You didn't want to go any earlier than that. Correct, correct. And, and I would completely agree with not only what Roy said, but it just seems to me like we've got two of our levies that need to kind of pause and open up and look at to see what, what funding they would provide, what additional services we need to be looking at. These levies are, are going to go up because that's the cost of doing business. And we understand that. I, and I've said all along that I, I see on one of the slides here that 42% of the funding of the WCCLS revenue is what this levy provides. That means 58% is on the cities and the county. I think we need to be certainly looking at that. And then the 16% is, is significant. So again, I think both of these topics, we need, we really need to do a pretty in-depth analysis, which means we're going to need to take that out to the general public. I, I believe that a May 25, I, I like the primaries because the people that vote in the primaries are the people that vote in just about everything. And they're the ones that pay attention. And so, I mean, I don't, I'm not a, I'm not a, a person who studies these things. It just seems to me like that they're the ones that we really want to be appealing to. So I would advocate for the May 25 election. But between now and then, we've got a lot of work to do and I look forward to that analysis of what that would look like.
Commissioner Willie, if I can provide a clarification relative to WCCLS funding, 42% of WCCLS funding comes from the levy and then 58% is from the general fund. This does not include city funding nor nonprofit support.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification.
Yep.
I was looking at the, the whole picture, thinking of everybody's all in. So yeah, that's, it, that picture needs to be communicated. I mean, I've said this all along, the general voter seems to think that this levy pays for all the libraries and it's not even remotely close. So different image. So thank you, Tony.
So also to be clear, as we were talking about staff's recommendation of May of 2025, being dependent upon a referral in early Q1, that January, February timeframe, Ms. Angie talked about how the library governance project won't be completed until September. And it is possible to do one referral before another referral. But similarly, we have the public safety and justice paper. And we're still working on the comms plan for that. And we know that there will be increased understanding in our community through at least the first half of 2024 on that. And then the jail planning project has been funded as of this fiscal year, but isn't even started yet. And for the six fiscal years that these new levies will take us out to, it takes us out to the completion of FY 33, which I think is another reason why staff's going to need time to do that analysis. So I appreciate the aggressiveness of the staff proposal to hit May. But I think having the level of understanding for a successful referral for that May date is not looking great, in my opinion. I also have serious heartburn over the pressure that you're putting on particularly the campaign effort for public safety and justice. So I know I'm repeating myself. I just have a lot of trepidation as one of five committing to an election that early.
You think in November 25 is what your preference would be?
Yes, yes. I just think we'll, given the level of work or what we need to do in each of these replacements, that timeline, as well as, I can't get to it fast enough. The November 2015 election, it was a renewal for public safety, so we haven't had a replacement in recent decades in an off year. But we did, there was a replacement for the library levy in November of 2015. So that tells me that I, I really don't want to put additional burden on our staff to do, you know, put 10 pounds of flour, of planning work into an eight pound sack. I won't even go down to a five pound sack, but I know the analogy doesn't really hold. Sorry, but I'm grasping for, for some analogies here because they're all doing great work and they're under such pressures and they are so passionate and dedicated that they will work themselves into the ground, which has its own risks as well. So so colleagues, could we take the slides down so we can see both of our, okay, great. We could see both of our colleagues. So at this juncture, we have a staff recommendation. I heard Commissioner Willie and Commissioner Phi both being comfortable with the staff recommendation. Commissioner Rogers and I have both leaned towards November 2025. And I wasn't good enough in my note taking, Commissioner Treese, when you were talking earlier to understand what it was you're leaning towards. Oops, you're on mute, sorry.
There we go.
Now we can't see you. Now we can hear you and see you.
You have to go back and forth. I couldn't get you on my iPad. I'm on my phone, so that's why. I didn't, and Chair, I didn't say what my, 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 my vote was for, so to speak. And given, given the, the, the discussion here, given the information about the staff level of work for preparation, and I, I, I am leaning to the, the November 25. I'm not leaning, I am in favor of November 25. And I, I have changed my, my thoughts through this discussion. So thank you, all of you for your, for your input.
And that does still put pressure on all of the analysis work.
Right.
So, you know, we're still going to have to do a referral in the first half of the year. So if I can read, if I can read my cryptic notes, at one point I sketched this out for myself. And I think for a November election, I was assuming that we would have a referral. Now I can't find my notes, like May, June.
Yeah, that would be, that would be ideal for the outreach side of this because that gives you all of the summer to engage with voters.
Yep, yep.
And then obviously into the fall as well, but that summertime is, it's an advantage. But it does, it does require to, to take advantage of it, that we would look to your board to get a referral in May or June of that, that same year.
Okay.
I'd like to circle back to, to commissioners who are looking at May. Do they have major heartburn? I mean, I'm, I'm not, let me sit in here, but they will. Are you going to still be enthusiastic about supporting in November of that, that year's first of May? Can you live with it?
Oh, yeah, no, I'm, I'm actually more leaning towards, because I want to provide, I guess my messaging wasn't very clear. I want to provide adequate timeline so we can get our homework done. And if that means we need to push to November 25, I'm perfectly fine with that. I mean, I, I think to me, the analysis is much more important than the date we go to voters.
How about you, Commissioner Phi? Commissioner Rogers asked a question.
It sounds like the direction is November 2024. I'm, I can live with that as well.
25.
2025, sorry, 2025. My, my initial vote is to go with the staff's recommendation. Staff are saying they can do this. May 2024 is what they tentatively recommend. So I'm in alignment with the subject matter experts and their proposal. But if the vote is, or the majority of the board is November, I, I can live with that. I wasn't here for the last one, so I don't really have a lot of experience to contribute of past, how it went and how well, what we could do differently or what are some of the lessons learned from that. But I'm here for it and look forward to contributing in support.
So that everyone who may be in the room, online or listening to or watching this video after this meeting, staff's recommendation is with regard to the work to refer. The, when I was talking about elections, that is work really on the board to take it through elections and staff is not And staff is not in a position to be able to comment on that, which is one reason why I chose to try and lay this out and what that involves so that all five of us would have the opportunity of being mindful of that. So, okay. So it, thank you very much. It sounds like we will target the November 2025 election and ask you to help lay out, and I'm more than happy to work with you, lay out some projected timelines for that so we can all pull together. That sounds great. Terrific. Well, thank you, Commissioner Trese, for taking the time to join us for this topic while you're on vacation. We really appreciate it.
Thank you and good luck to everybody.
Okay, see you next week. Well, other people will, I'll be on vacation.
Thank you, bye bye.
Okay, and with that, we do have, I think, four more, yes, four more topics on our agenda today. So at this juncture, we will break for lunch break and reconvene at 1 o'clock. Thank you very much. Bye bye.